Okay. Good evening. Welcome to our October Board of Education meeting. We will call to order. There are no changes to the agenda, so.
I'm going to accept the agenda.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. Motion by David, segmented by Gina, to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Vote. Seven oh. Okay. Delegations. Consent agenda. We'll look through that. Yes. Okay. We have donations from the class of 1970, $200 for the track, and anonymous one for $7,196.52 for the track. Mighty Mark, $50 for volleyball bags. Booster Club did $200 for volleyball bags. Leopard Pride, $300 for volleyball bags. Viv, $178 for volleyball bags. And Core Web Key, $50 for volleyball bags. So we've been calling for donations. That'll all be accepted under the consent agenda. And the rec report, which is a different one, will also be under that, so. Also move. Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by TJ, segmented by Patty, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 12th, 2021, the regular meeting of August 9th, 2021, the revenue neutral budget hearing, the budget hearing, and the regular meeting of September 13th, 2021, payment of the bills, the treasurer's report, the clerk's report, acceptance of the $200 track donation from the class of 1970, acceptance of an anonymous track donation in the amount of $7,196.52. And then the donations for volleyball bags. Mighty Mark, $50. Booster Club, $200. Leopard Pride, $300. Viv, $178. And Core Web Key, $50 for volleyball bags. And to approve the Lincoln County Rec Commission report by Kelly Snyder. Any discussion? All in favor? Vote. Seven oh. Okay. Now we have a presentation by the Lincoln Parent Teacher Community Organization.
Hello. Hopefully, the presentation is a stretch of our reason for being here this evening, but my name is Lori Spears. Share pictures also here, and we're representing the Lincoln PTCO Organization, which stands for Parent Teacher Community Organization, and has been recently formed. Just wanted to share with you a very brief overview of our 21, 22 objectives, first being the teacher appreciation initiative that we have going. The PTCO has provided a curving machine that's in the workroom at the elementary school, and we supply the pods that they get to use that go in that machine. Another thing that we have scheduled is doing one of the fall conference meals for the elementary staff during parent teacher conferences coming up in the next couple of weeks. This spring, we will be doing a breakfast for the teachers at the elementary school during National Teacher Appreciation Week, which is the first week of May. And we are working with an annual budget of up to $1,000 that we will be using for direct classroom support. So as far as the teacher appreciation initiative goes, that corrects that up. Parent and student support. PTCO provided the school supplies for the elementary that eliminated those from the school supply list for parents in the district, which included Kleenex, copy paper, cardstock, Thorx wipes, ziploc bags, and art supplies. As a service project that we have done the last few years, we did provide the discounted school supply packets to students, preschool through fifth grade at the elementary school. We had just under 50 this year that participated in that. And we are looking, of course, to expand our membership, which we will be doing here in the next coming months, we hope. All of that takes place through fundraising efforts that we have continued to do for the last few years, one of which is the annual trash bag sales that we have here around. Those have been super popular. We also have some catering opportunities. For COVID world became a thing as they were available. And we also have provided for first floor concession stands for events that take place at the elementary school. So just wanted to give you a heads up on who we are, what we're doing, and where we're going. So thank you so very much. Any questions, let me know. I don't know if Chris Caput or not, but probably he's here for the 5:00 one. But we don't.
Lori, can I just give a shout out? Because your next meeting is this Wednesday, right?
Yes. 5:30.
It's 5:30 for new members who'd like to come.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. For all of you that may not have heard that, this Wednesday at 5:30 is their next meeting at the grade school?
At the elementary school.
At the elementary school. If new members would like to come, show up there at 5:30. So thank you.
Mr. Crenshaw, he's going to use the projector. Can you switch it to her HD?
Okay. Next, we will have a presentation from the Lincoln Elementary Countering Program by Sawyer Potajek.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Sawyer Potajek. I am the K5 School Counselor. I gave you a few handouts there. I'm going to talk about them kind of as I go. I try not to present the exact same thing that I've presented in years past. That way, you get new information, and then with just each year being a different school year, there's always new things to add. First, what is an elementary school counselor? They're uniquely trained in a variety of areas, including mental health, child development, learning strategies, self-management, and social skills. And one of my favorite things about elementary school counseling is that school counselors can work with any and all students. They don't just work with certain students who've been identified for any reason. They can work with any and all students on a variety of topics to help them out. An education licensure, you have to have finished a school counseling program. You can go the teaching route and teach first, or you can go the school counseling pathways route as long as you have a bachelor in relatable areas, such as psychology, sociology, child development, those kind of things. And then you get your school counseling licensure once you've completed your program. That goes through KSDE. Why are elementary school counselors important? One of your handouts, I gave you that first one, really goes into detail about why elementary school counselors are important, the role that they play. This is just kind of a little bit from that. Elementary years are a time of a lot of developments for students. They go through quite a few developmental periods and lots of changes, and so having those school counselors there to kind of guide whatever problems they may be facing and offer that support is really a great thing. Social-emotional learning, this is a topic that has increased, especially in the last few years. It's gaining a lot of traction, and I don't see that changing, especially after the last couple of years, or current year with COVID and some of the social-emotional learning setbacks that have come with that. Counselors, one of our main focus in what we teach and our professional development is always social-emotional learning and how we can increase that in students and especially in the technology world that we live in, how to make sure that students are still getting that, you know, social contact with other kids and knowing how to manage emotions and all of the topics that fall under that area. School counselors at the elementary school, which is me, also provide support and relevant information to teachers and staff. I send out various things to them. I meet with them if they're having issues with students. We kind of bounce ideas off of each other, try things that'll work not only in the classroom, but maybe individually in small groups, just kind of offering additional information that they might not get otherwise. This is our mission statement for the LES counseling program. I'll let you guys read that. I won't read it to you. It is also listed on the Les, the school counseling portion of the USD page, so it can always be found there. So like I said, I'm Sawyer Potajek. I have a picture there of me and my husband Trent and my son Manny. I am from Lincoln. I grew up here. I went to school here, so I'm very happy that I have the opportunity to be back in my hometown, working in the schools that I attended, kind of giving back in that way, and that's really important to me. I went to McPherson College for my bachelor's degree. I have a bachelor's in psychology and sociology with emphasis in child development, and then I received my master's in school counseling from Whorf Hayes. I'm licensed through KSDE. Some of my more contact information, more info about me is on that second handout I gave you. That's one that I hand out to all parents at the beginning of the school year, just so that they have that information about me and a few other things that I have going on. I included some pictures here of the counseling room at the school. I don't know if you guys, I know you had a tour of the building, so I just included that on there. That's what it looks like. I see every class for character ed lesson every week, so they come in, and that's where we have our character ed lessons in that room. They have their spots, and it really works for us. They have a lot of space. We have opportunities to get up and move around to do different things. And then that top right picture is kind of the counseling area. I'll get more into that in just a little bit. The website, like I said, you can get through it through the USD page, through the explore tab, and the link is also on that handout I gave you. Okay. So really getting into it, what does a school counselor do? It can kind of be summed up into three major areas. For direct services, this means direct contact with students. I provide weekly classroom guidance lessons. We cover a variety of SECD, which is social-emotional character development, very similar to social-emotional learning, a variety of topics that meet the American School Counseling Association benchmarks and standards. I provide individual and small group counseling. Responsive services, that would be if a teacher or a student is really having an issue, maybe in a classroom, at recess, somewhere. The teacher usually sends me a message, or sends me a text, or calls me on my phone and says, hey, can you come help out? Those are the times when I go and I either sit with that student in the classroom, and until we get to a point where we can fully rejoin the class and do what we're doing, or that student and I then kind of leave together to go work on what we need to do. That would be a responsive service. And then school-wide programming, that is anything I do that involves the whole school and has opportunities for the whole school to be involved. And I'll show you a few examples of that here in just a bit. Indirect services can include like consultation, collaboration, anytime I'm working with teachers, or if I'm talking and working with parents, other counselors, or different mental health agencies, any kind of collaboration and working together to best aid students. Sit work, if I'm doing anything for our student intervention team, would be an indirect service. My newsletters could be considered indirect services. That was the third handout I gave you. Those are the first two newsletters I've done this year, just so you guys could see a hard topic example of those. Test coordination, anytime I'm planning or working on tests for students. And then referrals would be the last indirect service. I have a list that I keep of outside agency referrals that I can give to parents or talk about with parents. And I am also kind of our elementary school liaison for Central Kansas Mental Health. So whenever we have a referral for them, I then go through the referral page and do that and send that off to them, and then they contact me, and we get that scheduled and set up for students at our school. And then the last type of service here is the program management and school support. That includes planning for various activities, like character ed, our leopard families, anything I'm planning for. Documentation, which would be any kind of paperwork, going over the data for our counseling program, those kind of things. Professional development, and then other school duties if I'm, the times that I spent doing at lunch and helping out at lunch, or if I'm sobbing, those would all fall under program management and school support. So the American School Counseling Association recommends around 80% of time spent in indirect and indirect services and 20% of time spent in program planning and school support. So that's a snapshot of a normal week in quotations, because normal weeks, I just consider that a week that we were in school all day, every day that week. And so what I used was last week. So I keep track of everything I do during the day to collect that data, how much time I spend in direct services, how much time I spend in indirect services, services and program management. And so I always have that data that I'm adding to it. So you can see that brief snapshot of last week there, which direct services, about 44, indirect services, about 26, and program management, about 24.8. So it's pretty close to what the American School Counselor Association recommends. Okay. My needs assessment. At the beginning of every school year, I do a needs assessment for parents. It's on the back of that second handout I gave you. The link is there at the bottom. It just kind of explains it for parents, but I also tend to go over it with them. This is just a brief survey that asks them various questions about what they'd like to see for the program, and that way it helps me plan and make sure I'm providing the most relevant and applicable services for our students and our families. And I plan to do some other needs assessments throughout the year. It's been pretty hit or miss the last couple of years. I usually always do the first one for parents, and then depending on what else goes on, whether other ones get out, I have one that I do for staff. I have one that I do, I let the students do, usually closer to around December, January, and let them have some input. On this year's need assessment, I had 48 responses, which I was pretty pleased with. That's, it keeps increasing each year, so I hope that trend continues. It consists, it's really short, like I said, but it has Likert scales, multiple choice selections, and then some short answers where they can leave comments to different things. And so some of the data from this year's needs assessment, the most important counseling services that parents recognized were classroom lessons, teaching SEL skills, individual and small group counseling, school-wide programming, and parental support and information. There was a variety, a whole list of things they could choose from. Those were the top four. And then the most needed topics for lessons, they said, were responsibility, learner study skills, how to, you know, get ready for tests or get homework ready and make sure they bring it back, those kind of things. Growth mindsets, self-awareness and positive body image, friendship skills, and then positive communication skills. So looking at those, that helps me plan kind of our character ed topics. Usually each month we do has a theme, and so that gives me some ideas of what themes we really need to work on this year and how to implement those in all grades in different ways. And so this year, I was especially pleased. 83% of respondents said that they definitely understand the role of the school counselor. That's another one that has increased each year. I think, I want to say the first year that I did it, that number was like 42%. And so as we've gone on, being able to interact with parents more, that information and understanding has increased. And then 93.4% of respondents, they count a school counselor and their child's billion is very important. That's another statistic that has definitely increased in the last couple of years. So I was really pleased to see both of those. So my counseling referrals, students have the option to refer themselves. That top right picture there is the paper that students can use to refer. That is available in a folder in the hallway right next to that box. Those are also available, all teachers have them in their classroom. And in our first character ed lesson of year, I give every student one that they can have just on hand. So they're available in multiple places. Students, I feel really useless. It's, I've been pretty pleased with it. If they have a problem, they can grab one, they can fill it out, they can slip it in my box. They know that the box can only be unlocked by me, that I'm the only one who's going to see it. And then within a day or so, I will grab them and we can go over whatever it is that's bothering them. Students can also be referred by teachers and staff or parents. Their referral form looks a little bit different. It's a little bit more in-depth, and so that's an option. They can go through and select the various topics that they want me to work on with their students. And I set up then a time with their teacher to pull them, and usually it's always brief counseling. It doesn't go on forever and ever, but we worked through that and we set a goal, and then when we want to achieve that goal, and we just kind of keep checking in and seeing, okay, do we need to make any changes, what's going on? And then ending it with that support they know then is always there. If that becomes a struggle again in the future, we can revisit it. Confidentiality, I teach all students that at the very beginning of the year, this means that what they say to me stays with me. They can give me permission to share. A lot of times I'll ask if what we worked on today or ideas that we came up with, if they would be okay with me sharing those with their teacher. Most of the time, they say yes. There have been a few times where they say no, and that's okay. And they know then that there are limits to confidentiality if I know that somebody is being hurt or if there's a plan for somebody to be hurt, then I'm required by law to report that, and I teach them all that at the beginning of the year. And so that space there in my room, it's kind of blocked off. That's where I do any kind of individual or small group counseling. It has different things we can do. We can work at the chalk table. I have different check-ins on the walls, different fidgets. A lot of times people say, oh, it looks like you just sit over here and have fun, which that's one of my favorite things about it, is counseling at the elementary school level is definitely a lot of fun. You get to have manipulatives, you get to use games, but all the while, you're really working on a topic in an area that students need and you're making it fun for them. And that's what I love most about it. And so I also told you about my resources for outside mental health services. I have those lists for parents. Okay. School-wide programming. My first example I have here is our leopard families. We did this two years ago, and it was the first year we did this program, and I thought it was a pretty good success that first year. The kids really enjoyed it, a lot of our staff enjoyed it. We were unable to have it last year due to everything that was going on. We have brought it back this year, but we've dialed it back a lot from what it was that first year. Our families meet monthly, so the first Wednesday of every month, they meet, and our families are composed of one student from every grade and an adult leader. And that is, they will meet with the same group every time we have our leopard families. And so there are a few grades that might not have a kindergarten or might have two fourth graders, just depending on the class size, but most of them will have a student from every grade. This is a really good example for social-emotional learning and that character development. It gives students an opportunity to interact with other students and teachers that they may not interact normally and get to know another group that they have throughout the whole year to support and be with. And they do different things when we meet. Right now, they've been working on coming up with their group handshakes or signals, like waves, specific waves that they can do when they see their family members, different things like that, their rules. They came up with their family names, which are always really funny. But just different things that whenever they see their family members, they have something, you know, they know them, it connects them to them, and that's really big for our social-emotional learning. And so I included just a few pictures of a few of our families there. Pop print made our shirts, so those are our shirts this year. We don't have a group picture yet, so once we get that group picture, we'll take one with everybody, hopefully, like we did that first year to see them all. But right now, we just have a few individual ones. And then my other example of school-wide programming would be our leopard leaders. This was something, we had done it in the past, but it was, it was quite different. It'd been a long time since we'd done it. I actually found those notepads. I bought a whole stack of them, and I was like, oh, we can use these for something. And so now we do the leopard leaders. That bottom picture on the right, every teacher has one of those notepads, and all staff members have them available somewhere that they can find. If they catch a student really showing great behavior or any of those words on the paper, they can fill one out for that student, and those then get turned into me. So if, all students can participate in it. They always have that opportunity. And once I receive one for a student, I grab them, take their picture really quickly, I let them hold it. They get to take the paper that the teacher filled out for them home with them, and I put that information into a slideshow, and it goes up on our TV in the hallway. You can see in that picture on the left. And then it stays up there for a whole week. So anybody in the school walking by, if on rotation, they can see who the leopard leaders are up there for that week. And then on Friday, when kids come to character ed, if they've gotten a leopard leader that week, they get to ring the big hand bell. I have a picture of it up on the right. It's, they're always surprised at how heavy it is. It's a pretty big bell, and it's very loud. So they always have to go and check and see if other people in the school heard it like on the other side, which usually they can't because it's a pretty loud bell. But this is just another example of the school-wide programming, and it's great for peer modeling, showing students that, you know, anyone can do things. Here are examples of things that kids are doing that are showing leadership and good character. And I've definitely seen, I know we've had a few of them filled out for kids in the lunchroom, and then when I've been in there, kids have seen those ones filled out for people in the lunchroom, and so then they're like, oh, these are things that I can do in the lunchroom, like maybe throw all the trash and pick up. We're going around and picking food up off the floor. So it's been a really good peer modeling, social-emotional learning tool for that. And our leopard leaders are posted on Friday on the USD page. So I'm sure you guys have probably seen those, but they get posted on there, so the community and parents get to see that as well. Okay. Are there any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, next on the agenda, we need to appoint a KASB delegate for annual convention.
I knew that John Buttonhoff can be delegate for the convention.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Gina, segmented by TJ, that USD Board of Education appoint John Buttonhoff to serve as the voting delegate at the 2021-2022 KASB Annual Convention. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Next, we have an update on bus 20 and vehicles.
Just want to let you know that I did have a school district come and check out that bus. They took it for a test drive, and they are seeking your approval with their board meeting this week to purchase bus 20 for $40,000. We're currently working on strategies to make transportation easier for us and more flexible. We're looking at options such as 14 plus one buses that small groups could take, possibly two of those. We're also looking at other transit vans, but they can only hold 10 plus one. So there's a lot of limitations by state on what we can transport students in. My goal was to maximize the value of a depreciating asset. So we're not in a hurry to make a rush. We're going to try to be very strategic about where we go with those funds and what, what best model suits our activities for that.
Thank you. Next, COVID update.
I am happy to report that we have no more positive student cases at this point in time. We have had another staff positive. So for the moment, things are looking very good. I talked to Lincoln County. I talked to Lincoln County Health Department today to get a most current update. And as a, we had 24 new cases last week. The numbers are above what we experienced last year on a weekly case basis. You know, you can discuss whether that's more testing or anything else, but the data is the data, and it is that last week, we had 24 new cases. Currently, we're not as affected at the schools as we were. So, our quarantine students, we're not seeing positives grow out of that population. So, that's very, very good news.
And on that note, I don't know whether anybody has any other thoughts about where we're headed or the, the current mask mandate that we're under. Scott and I had discussed, we decided on November 8th because we would have a meeting then. And that was what we thought, so we didn't have to have a special one. But that was, that was a decision made in the moment. So, I didn't know if there was any other discussion tonight. Did anybody have, or thoughts, whether that's okay, whether it's too long, too short, or whether we reevaluate in November? I just wanted to give anybody a chance if they had any other thoughts or concerns that they could voice them.
I think as, as cases drop, drop down or get down to zero, I'd like to see us look at ending that mask mandate sooner than the 8th.
I, I would agree. If we're, if we're, if we get to zero, you know, if we don't have anyone, it would be well, you know, and things are, are going good, you know, it would be nice to get tickets and not to wear one as long.
Yes.
I would still say that it's optimal for parents to decide what's best for their kids.
Yes. Are, are we, okay, just so we're all clear, are we thinking zero in our schools or zero in our county? Because it may take longer to get to zero in our county.
I would say zero in our schools.
In the, in the schools.
I would disagree with that. I would say in the county in that case, because if it's in the county, it's in the county. And I know from a healthcare perspective, we're seeing an uptick in our brand in COVID cases. So, I, I, I think reassessing on a monthly basis, being in close conversation with Ladona due to the fact that if we have an outbreak, major outbreak, we shut down. And I know the major feedback there are from people at homeschool or distance learning. It doesn't work for the kids, and that they're falling behind, so.
Yes, and that was, that was some of the thought in going to the mask was to keep kids in school, because getting them in the buildings is of utmost importance, as much of an inconvenience and challenge as it is.
Correct. And part of the strategy of that decision, the kids are not suffering the same effects as adults. So, it is almost as protective of transmission and spread as it is of our adult staff. Because if we lose three or four staff members in a building, we can't function in that building. We don't have enough subs. And we'll end up closing schools for staff shortage, probably before we would close for student illness. And so, part of this is keeping our staff healthy and safe as well. So, there were two, you know, it was spread, and it was also protect staff, because the spread is an issue. But keeping our staff safe so they can be in the buildings is just as critical. I would like to see us discontinue masks tonight, just because of all the learning disabilities they're causing. And do masks help? Do they, do they really help, you know? It's a big question. I don't wanna be, I still wanna be cautious for our kids. I don't wanna be careless, but at the same time, do they really help?
I think that is the great question. I think that's a great question.
Well, I feel like.
We struggle a little bit with how we have a little, I feel like we say we're masking, but then we're talking about parent-teacher conferences. We're still bringing in planning on, like, that's next week, right?
It's the 21st, it'll be a week.
Or two weeks.
It's the 21st.
It's a week from Thursday, and then the following Tuesday. So, we're talking about, we're masking and bringing in parents, and we're, now there's a meal, and so, it is a little contradictory.
And I would say the meal was tentative, and, and we've, we've discussed that. I don't know what the next weekend half is gonna bring. We're ready to go simply to use up the supplies we had from August. If, if we don't have it, they can stay frozen as well, that's fine. And we will have a sign-up. We're working with Green Bush, which is a free service to us called Sign-up Genius. And parents can put the time that they would like, and they're definitely spread out. We will also offer at the elementary school an option for Zoom and for telephone conferences as well. So, it is a limited number of people in the building. And right now, where I stand, I don't see us having a meal. But like I said, a lot can change in a week and a half.
I, we actually are, we sent out some stuff letters today. So, my letter said that please limit the number of people that come for parent-teacher conferences, but we are still planning on having them. We're gonna do them in the room so they can social distance with the parents and the teacher. We don't feed our parents, so we don't have that problem.
That was, that's the discussion I felt we needed to have, and I, I think it's good. I, I wondered too about the meal. I guess I was curious if there was, the 21st gives us two weeks from when we did the mask mandate, whether if we went away from it, whether doing the meal would be more simple, or whether that's more dependent on the community and cases. I didn't know how you were.
No, I think it's highly dependent on where we're at at that time. And the meal that we're talking about is a very simple meal. It isn't like on a Wednesday, we couldn't make that decision to go ahead and have it on a Thursday.
Yes, and if the weather's decent, if it's outside, makes it.
Absolutely.
I, I've been probably more with TJ. I know it's a month, but I think continuity with the kids and the staff, getting used to wearing masks and stuff again. And then, if they go on this week, yes, this, next week, no. I mean, it kinda gives them, and then we gotta wait next board meeting.
Yeah. Well, I think we've all got these in front of us. This was another discussion, whether this needed to be put out there so everyone understands what the criteria is. And I also, you all know where I stand on with David. We could do away with it tonight, and I would be okay with that. I feel that it's the students' choices. I know that before we even initiated the mask mandate, the coaches asked their players to do it because they felt that that was best for their players. And I think that those are the kind of things that, those are the voluntary things that we as a society can do to protect ourselves. I do understand as a school board, we have a responsibility for all the kids in that building. But I also feel that they have their decisions to make, so I'm on. It, it, it's a tough decision.
Yes.
We watch, I hear different school boards all over make, everybody has to make different decisions, so. But I do feel that having a plan in place so that when six kids are positive and we're all a little uptight, that we actually can follow this and say, you're going home.
This will help parents understand.
Yes.
And, and, and we all get confused. Who has to stay home? Who doesn't have to stay home? Who has to quarantine? Who doesn't have to quarantine? And, and I think this will help make it a lot more clear for faculty and for parents and kids, you know, how things work.
Well, it's my understanding too, though, that in the past, we could either follow the guidelines of the county health department or stricter. And I guess my point is, when it comes to healthcare, looking at our decisions, local decisions, OPAs, their medical recommendations, I wouldn't ask a decision to what surgery is uneven or equal. I would do a mechanic for that. We all have our specialty in our fields. And the ones that are working with it day-to-day and see the transmission, if a mask is, that, that's a pretty minor thing. Speaking from all the hospital and nursing staff that has been wearing masks for over a year now, all day long. We actually have gone to now that we have to wear N95s. We cannot wear regular masks in healthcare. So, that's OSHA rules. So, we actually have a thicker mask that's heavier than clothing, but we have to do it, because we do it because of that, we care for the people in the community.
Because it does a better job.
It does a better job. The N95 mask.
So, these don't do much.
They do better than not doing. I don't know where you're heading with that. It does better, same thing, it covers your mouth when you sneeze. It does better than not doing.
Yes, yes.
The mask does the same thing. It, it reduces the particulates from out of your mouth, so. So, first, I think that we need to listen to healthcare and our local administration that are leading our school, because ultimately, they're responsible. And yes, it is a inconvenience. I'm not gonna say it's not. I would love to hear it. But that's just my personal opinion.
Did you feel like Ladona had any grand revelation?
Well, this was, these flow charts came about from a Sunday meeting that we had with Ladona. You know, I don't know how KDHE classifies or where they, where they draw lines for classification, but two positive cases that are transmitted from student to student is defined as an outbreak. So, you know, if I had, you know, I don't know that that's like a massive outbreak and an apocalyptic event, but that's just their definition. So, that's what Ladona was going by when we had that. We met on Saturday, and then we also met on Sunday to develop this. Nikki and I met on Saturday, Sunday, Ladona came in, and, and we put a poster board and we started sketching out flow charts and, okay, what if, what about this scenario? What about this? And this is what we came up with, it is approved, Ladona agrees with it. We're fortunate in a sense that she's very reasonable, you know? It, it could be very, very heavy-handed, but she's very reasonable with caution. And I appreciate that from our county health department. They, you know, it, it could be, and it is in some places, a lot worse. So, if, if you think this would be helpful for understanding, we can get this put out tomorrow in multiple of medias to, to get these out. But this is, this whole thing was developed with her present, with her approval on every step that we have on these flow charts.
And, and that was developed prior to us going all masks, or that was just?
Yes. And then, we just saw more cases and more, and that was when, you know, we talked about it and said, you know what, maybe we better get a little more proactive and see what we can do.
Is there any way we could let up with the masks a little quicker in grade school? Things are, our issues are in high school, right?
Correct.
The board is able to do whatever the board would like to do, because county health has not put us under a mask mandate. That was 298 decided. I would say this, though, and not to overcomplicate things. The, the, the students at the elementary level can still transmit the virus, and my staff is just as important there as anywhere else. The, the symptoms of these kids, and I'm no medical professional, I'm just sharing, they seem to be so minor compared to when I had it in over Christmas last year. It's, it's not the impactful debilitating illness. So, we don't even know who's, who might be positive that's not tested with. Is that what everybody else understands? That's everything I read. We're, we're not seeing the fevers. The temperature scans are not a reliable source. Kids with allergy-type symptoms are testing positive. And if you separate buildings like that with siblings in a small community, and as I said, if that, if, if the building staff can't come to work, it's, it's just a mess. Then everybody's home. Like that, like that flu last, whenever, before I got here. Where you just have to, you just can't have school.
My thought is that masks, I don't believe they're doing, I don't believe they're helping. And it, it's transmitted in many other ways, and that's, that's where I'm coming. Understand that's where.
Would you like, yes, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. And a couple of things to think about. So, if you look at the COVID dashboard that KDHE put out with the governor's office, it'll actually tell you how many teens are vaccinated, 12 to 18 and 298. We have 18 teens vaccinated. I don't have a single student at my level vaccinated, because they can't be. I don't have a single student under the age of 12. And it's also important to think about, when we talk about learning loss, the number one place that learning loss is the most critical is for our elementary kids. I had some students move in this year, two of them, that were in districts last year that were virtual for a good part of the time, kind of up and down, in and out of school due to, due to virtual learning. Both of them were recommended for retention. And when we looked at the data, we're like, but it doesn't really support that. But they had this up and down here, and they weren't testing correctly. So, we went ahead and moved them to where they would normally be. And in six weeks, we've closed huge gaps in six weeks. So, it just goes to show you, the number one place that we need to have kids is in school. And I hate masks. And I had a kid ask me the very first day, do you like this? No, I don't, but I like you being in school more than that. And if this is what I have to do, and if this is what students have to do to do that, this is a temporary outcome for me. For the, the longer-term outcome for me is what's more important. So, those are just some thoughts from the elementary, elementary side of it.
Well, I felt it was good to have a conversation. I don't know if we're okay with November being our day to make that decision, or. Here we leave it up to our administration team and Ladona, that if they wanted to lift this sooner, they get some, it's nice a board meeting, but I think it's important, it's their building, they're responsible to get. I think you should be looking at their decision. Cannot allow us to revisit it on next board meeting. That is my suggestion. Yeah, basically, four more weeks. I just, one day, I think we get off for the day before Halloween or the Friday before.
I can tell you that our kids that are quarantined right now, they have, all are returning on Thursday, this Thursday. They'll all be green and clear, except for two kids that are quarantined because of a sibling that are escalated. Otherwise, the whole building should be back to normal Thursday. If that impacts any decisions that you make.
Okay. I did like TJ's comment. I, I say we leave it up to administration to decide if they would like to lift it sooner. Fine. If, if not, we will have a motionary move on November 8th, whether to continue or whether to lift it then. Because that, that's what we set out, that's basically what everybody's under the assumption of, so. Continue. And if, if cases do drop and we don't see anymore, it would be nice to. Okay. HVAC update?
I'm excited to say that the construction has started at the gymnasium for the HVAC system. They have forms in steel out there ready to pour concrete for the pads. They are going to move the dust collection system for the woodshop so that it's easier to install. They're not gonna charge for that. But right now, the, the exhaust system for all the equipment comes down the room and then beers off a 45-degree angle out to the outside building into the barrels, where a more convenient place to place that one of the HVAC units is there. And if they move it, then it'll have a less restrictive straight flow into that dust collection system. move it, then it'll have a less restrictive straight flow into that dust collection system. So it's, we're starting to move. They have a lift over there, they're working on ductwork, they're going to try to get everything done prior to the delivery of those units and the arrival of a crane to settle. So we're moving ahead.
Good to hear. All right. Another update windows? High school?
You know, it's, it's always exciting to discover new things. And there always seems to be plenty to discover. So when we're talking about HVAC and issues and different things, it was brought to my attention that we have window issues at the high school up there. 26 years old, the south facing windows are deteriorating rapidly. They don't seal. This is the top of a window, that black strip is supposed to be inside this metal, that's daylight, that strip right there. This, because of the daylight, when it rains, the moisture comes in, all of this delamination of the window sill is from these leaking windows. And here's another better picture, this seal here is supposed to seal against this metal. That's, you can stick your finger in that gap and you can see the daylight on the other side. When our team is mowing, the teachers have to vacuum their window sills from the grass clippings and dust. And Mrs. Flynn can speak more to this, but we walked around the building and it is very apparent that the south facing windows are the ones that are in the most disrepair. Do you want to add anything before I talk about the contractor?
Yeah, the south windows, so it'll be three classrooms, four classrooms on the junior high side and three high school classrooms on the high school wing. If you stand there, you can feel the heat blow, a couple of teachers have curtains and you can see them move if it's windy. I used to have a classroom on the south side and if it was really windy, they whistle, the windows whistle like loudly, very distracting to the students. They do not seal, like you said, we have some window seals that are completely ruined, which I think, they don't match the rest of the school, so I think they've been replaced before, probably for the same reason, but when you fix the windows, we replaced the window seal and now they're ruined again. They're bowed, there's some that actually they put wood in instead of the, it's almost like a vermicot on the top of this. There's some that actually have wood on them and they're all warped and ruined as well. You can go in there, like the dirt and the grass that's up on there, you can see the moisture when it rains, they're in bad, bad shape. Of course, they're 26 years old, like you said.
So as we look at just this constant need for repair here, there is just a lot of needed repairs. And hopefully at the November board workshop, we can talk about prioritizing those and looking at funding options for those and things. Just to get an idea, because I was curious, Brett found the construction book from when that thing was built and the glass, the window installer was in that book. So I contacted them and they came out and looked at it. And the south facing windows contain, consist of five double window units and three single window units. The cost on those currently for those eight units is $32,000 to replace them. With a more modern, same style window that has the flip out on the bottom. You, I think you all are aware that there's issues with library windows. Well, hang on to your hats for a second because that estimate is a hundred and two, 20?
Yeah.
Hundred and $20,000 to replace the library windows. The suggestion was made that we put a knee hole there, partway up, so then the windows are at the same grade level as all the other windows, but we do away with that glass at the bottom. He looked in, we looked at all the trim that's coming off, it's so old that you can't replace those things. All those metal pieces are held on with plastic clips and we peel some off, the plastic clips are broken, that's why they won't stay, you can't buy the clips, you can't buy the metal or you can't buy the windows. So it's just a, we have, we have to have a facility strategy on maintaining this. His recommendation was a knee wall and then a two-foot apron on the outside pitched away from the building and get that order away from those windows. We're currently, we currently have ceiling issues in those windows and if we don't start taking care of this stuff, then we're going to have interior issues. As we already do with the window sills, we're going to have interior issues, but then we're going to talk about repairing on top of everything else, so. It's going to be a topic, this isn't something that we can approve because it's over $20,000, it'll have to be bid out if we want to get those south facing windows done, but, you know.
The 120 on the library, that would be if you get away with the bottom windows and just did the top?
That was his guesstimate, he didn't measure it, he didn't quote it, he just said, I'll park it about here. Because he said what you'd save on the glass on the bottom will spend on the concrete, because it needs to match kind of building, you just can't pour a great concrete form and, you know, add little air pocket holes in and things like that, so.
If you're at the high school, you can look like down the side of the windows of the library and the bottoms look like they're all popping out.
They are popping out.
Well, yeah, they are, it's not.
You could stick your fingers between the panes into the interior, not to the interior, but you go against the stud or whatever that they're mounting against, so.
Yeah, they're definitely not square anymore and at some point in time, the moisture, everything's going to start coming up underneath.
You know, it's just stuff that we just discover as we go along, it's aged school, you know, it needs, it needs some attention, it needs some remodeling on the inside, it's not going to get better over time. And strategically, we just need to think about how we're going to do that with funds that we have. And that'll be a big topic of discussion in November, is looking at funding ideas, looking at options and prioritizing how we stay on top of. Maintenance is an expensive ongoing thing, but it is the cheapest way to keep things running. That's all they have on windows.
Okay. I think we all didn't get a chance to look at those when they walked around the building too, so. Maybe not quite as surprised, but the sticker shock of the elders.
Well, you have to understand, glass and aluminum were in the spike for some reason and in the past few months, 30% increase in glass prices and aluminum prices. We had a windshield replaced today on one of the vehicles that had a rock chip in it and then cracked across the visual line. 30% increase in windshield glass, so. It's not a time for repairs if you're the body or.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Admin reports? Your principal reports are in your packet, I don't know if they have anything you want to add?
I'll add something really quick that's really exciting for us, so we got out with parents, we went to State November, which actually happens that last week in October. Lots of fun things that Mrs. Pitt and Mrs. Hayward have planned for us. One that's really exciting this year, I don't know if you've ever seen your kids bring home these books, who would win, this is hornet or wasp, who would win, alligator versus python, things like that. This is by a guy named Jerry Paletta. Jerry Paletta will do a virtual visit with us the Wednesday of that week, and I don't know what day that is offhand. Wednesday, October 27th, he'll do a virtual visit with students and they can ask questions of him, he can talk about the ideas for these books, and then every student gets a signed copy of a book. So it's a pretty cool event that we haven't had to do before. Mrs. Brenneman has been really instrumental in organizing it, so really something that we're looking forward to.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I included everything in mind.
Any questions for them, for any of you?
I need to get some to the other side of the aisle. So I'm excited to tell you about a new program that we're getting ready to implement and it has to do with our district on vehicles. So picture this, picture you have a meeting that you need to go through and you need to go pick up a school vehicle. And you allow enough time to go pick up the vehicle, but you timed your meeting such that you're ready to roll. And you find your vehicle on empty, time and time again. And call it a pet peeve of mine, it's a pet peeve of mine. So I talked to CVA and we are working on a program where every vehicle, well, part of the problem is this, that you can't get fuel after hours here. When Mighty Mart or Meyer tires close, you can't get fuel. So you come back late from an event, you just have to go to the school and park the vehicle, you know? We are now implementing a, we're processing it, we have the cards, we have the papers that we need and everything else. Where every vehicle, when it gets checked out, will be checked out with a key, a report card and a fuel card. And these fuel cards are keyed specifically to a vehicle with a very specific PIN and they'll require an odometer reading be punched in. So you put in a vehicle number, you put in an odometer reading and you put in a PIN and then we can get fuel 24 hours a day. So the new requirement to drive our luxury vehicles will be that you refill it at the end of your trip, no matter the time. The other big thing about this, and I was harping on building maintenance before, this will give us an effective way to track vehicle maintenance needs because we don't have that in place right now. We don't know if we're changing oil at 3,000 miles or 15,000 miles. So this will give us a very systematic approach to tracking mileage, having our vehicle serviced and ready for the next staff member that needs it. And it will be required, this is not an optional, oh, if you have time, go fill it. If you check out a vehicle and you hand that envelope in with your keys and your driver card and there's not a fuel receipt in there, the envelope will be handed back to be filled and be ready for the next staff member. It's respectful, it's responsible, and I'm not the only one that's irritated by empty gas tanks, trust me. It's very frustrating, so, but it's a real positive because we can be prepared for the next trip and we can take care of our vehicles. Oil and tire, I'm becoming my father, there's nothing more important than regular maintenance and tire rotation on a vehicle, so I'm excited about that. The other thing I added out to you isn't exactly exciting, but it is informative. So if you haven't figured it out by now, I like spreadsheets and I like data. So we got a fuel bill for September that made my jaw drop. It was $4,262 for fuel. If you'll see on that spreadsheet, the far right column, that is almost double what we paid in the past. So I started digging into it and I requested a monthly report for the last year, which they kindly gave me. It broke it out by diesel usage, unleaded gasoline and prices. So I assimilated that data here so you can see it. Using 1,100 gallons of diesel isn't unusual because we used 1,100 last year. What's shocking is that we paid a dollar eighty-six a gallon last year and it's 280 this time around. Now, we are driving the school vehicles more for activities and small sports are taking vans and not having the DS expense of a whole activity bus. So you can see our unleaded gasoline fuel was quite a bit higher also and we're over, we're a dollar and a nickel higher than what we were paying a year ago. So we were paying a dollar ninety-one for unleaded and we're currently at 296. The only break the school district gets is on federal taxes, we still pay the state fuel taxes. So that's concerning and going to be monitored because this is unexpected expenses and surprises that I don't really like.
Just a quick question on the spreadsheet here, I see you have every month, but there's none June, July, August.
We don't have school, so we're not.
Why do you know if we still have some?
If it was, it would be minimal, I just asked for that.
Mr. Kretschl, one way we, farmers get around this is we contract our fuel at different vendors a year. Sometimes you do a good job and sometimes no. But that's one way you can somewhat, I'd love for that to be.
And I think with the CVA and card, you get a better deal on the gas too.
Well, this is their, this is what they build us, the prices on our invoices. I did ask because, you know, if you don't ask, you don't know, if we could barter on pricing, I was told no. We could negotiate price and they said no.
Did they say anything about contracting?
They did not mention that to me and I don't know about that, so somebody would have to teach me or help me contact them and see what that is. But I just wanted to see that. Another thing that's concerning, and I, and I think I told you this months ago when we were looking at that gas, natural gas prices, our utility costs this month for $12,000. The high school lunch electric bill was almost $7,000. I know that when we built the budget, we were told to plan on a budget for a 10% increase in electrical bills and a 25% increase in natural gas. We haven't even hit the natural gas yet. So again, these, these kind of bills concern me and I will be watching and calling and keeping an eye on things, but I just wanted you to know, as you look through packets and you see bills that I'm as shocked as you are, but I am gathering the information, I can't really solve the problem, but I'm getting the understanding of why they are where they are and what it's like. I'll have to adjust and we'll have to do what we need to do to survive. And it's beautiful fall weather, so that's going to be more positive, so there you go.
I think that concludes the comments. Moving on, I think next we have executive session for personnel. Forty-five minutes to start. Okay, motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education go into executive session at 8:12 PM for 45 minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel and that the Board of Education return to open meeting at 8:57. In the Board of Education conference room, the executive session is required to protect the privacy of non-elected personnel exempt under coma. On paper, opposed, seven.